Okay, good morning. Good morning, everybody. It's so nice to see everybody's smiling faces, including their smiles. I call the meeting of March 8, 2022, of the DuPage County Board to order. And may I please ask, Mr. Jim Zay, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for the invocation, please?
My Pledge of Allegiance is that the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome Rabbi Jessica Weiner from the congregation Itz Kaim and Lombard to lead us in invocation. Rabbi?
Thank you. A great teacher of Jewish ethics, Rabbi Menachem Mendel Katz wrote, "A person who is cold can heat his or her home and get dressed up in his or her fur coat or other warm clothes." The difference between the two is that the first case, the entire house is warm and everyone in it feels comfortable, but in the second case, only the person wearing the coat feels warm, while all other people continue to freeze. God of compassion, while many of us enjoy the warmth of our justice, our neighbors suffer the cold. Help us to open our hearts as we seek to turn up the heat of fairness and equity so that each person in our county may feel our warmth. God of wisdom, help us to turn up the heat of honesty and call out unfairness and inequality when we see it in ourselves and in our society. Help the leaders of our county to not ask first, "How do we fix this?", but what do we need to learn? How might we need to change? And to whom do we need to listen? God of mercy, guide the leaders of our county so that they may heed the call to turn up the heat of mercy and see and ensure equality for all our people, from our youngest residents to our oldest. May all the residents of DuPage County feel the heat, the warmth, and the love from their leaders. Each of us created in the image of God has the ability to heat our home of DuPage County. When we see our colleagues and friends who are content to sit in their coats while others shiver in the long, cold night, may we all speak out, and when we encounter those who have sat outside during the long, cold night, let us listen. May our leaders and all of us be granted the wisdom and courage to turn up the heat in our county, to know and to do what is right and good and true. May the warmth of our gathering here today begin to spread the heat of community, the heat of justice, and the heat of love. Can you hear out soon? May this be God's will.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Deputy Clerk Adam Johnson, please call the roll.
Here.
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 Sorry.
Here.
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 Sorry.
Garcia.
Hart.
Here.
Krajewski.
Here.
LaPlante.
Here.
Ozog.
Here.
Pachalski.
Here.
Renahan.
Here.
Rutledge.
Here.
Schwarz.
Here.
Selman.
Here.
Tornatori.
Here.
Anze.
Here.
We have a quorum. So on the Order of Chairman's Report, we have a couple of presentations here. First and foremost, I'd like to present our proclamation in support of Ukraine. And I'd like to invite Greg Hart up here from District, Greg Hart, District One, all of the folks from District One, and John Duresko from St. Andrew Ukrainian Orthodox Church. I think your church is located in District One. John, so thank you. Welcome. Welcome. We had a chance to chat and meet a little bit earlier, and these are really consequential and dramatic times in our world, and so we're really thrilled and honored to welcome you here to DuPage County. Shortly after the Russian invasion of Ukraine, member Greg Hart asked if we could proclaim our solidarity with the people of that nation and also offer our support to the thousands of Ukrainians and Ukrainian Americans living in DuPage County. As we sit here today in this meeting, we all are demonstrating our support for Ukraine and its people with our attire. We're trying to be mindful of the terrible grief and the worry the Ukrainian families in DuPage County are experiencing, knowing their loved ones may be in harm's way. Our guests today provide a vital lifeline to these families through St. Andrew's Ukrainian Orthodox Church. So welcome, Mr. Duresko, and please allow me to read the proclamation, and then I'd like to invite you to share a few thoughts up here at the podium. Whereas in 1991, shortly after the fall of the Soviet Union, Ukraine declared independence from Moscow. And whereas, over the past decade, Ukraine's democratically elected leaders have faced repeated threats from Russia, most recently by Russian President Vladimir Putin. And whereas, satellite images captured in the winter of 2021 and into 2022 showed ongoing buildup of Russian forces near Ukraine, with estimates soon surpassing 100,000 troops deployed. Whereas, on February 24, 2022, Russian President Putin authorized a special military operation in Ukraine as Russian forces began missile and artillery attacks, striking major Ukrainian cities, including Kiev. And whereas, the United Nations Human Rights Office says, "As of March 4, 2022, at least 227 civilian deaths are confirmed, with another 525 wounded," acknowledging the numbers are probably vastly undercounted. And whereas, "The military incursion into Ukraine has caused a humanitarian crisis, with news accounts of more than 1.2 million people fleeing the war-torn country." And whereas, "According to the most recent U.S. Census figures, more than 50,000 people of Ukrainian ancestry live in the Chicago area, with many in the suburban communities, including Bloomingdale, Wood Dale, Addison, and Schaumburg." And whereas, "Many Ukrainian families are seeking solace at churches throughout the Chicago area, including St. Andrew Ukrainian Orthodox Cathedral in Bloomingdale, serving about 150 families, largely Ukrainian World War II immigrants, second-generation Ukrainians, and now a new immigration of culturally aware and patriotic Ukrainians. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Cronin, Chairman of the DuPage County and members of the County Board, do hereby support DuPage residents of Ukrainian heritage and join members of the St. Andrew Ukrainian Orthodox Cathedral and all who pray for a swift resolution to the military action in Ukraine so that ordinary citizens may return to their homes with peace and calm restored in their region." I'll entertain a motion. Seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it enacted this 8th day of March 2022. John, would you accept this on behalf of the Ukrainian Americans living in DuPage County?
Thank you, Chairman Cronin, and thank you, Greg, for reaching out to me over the past 12 days. I think we've all witnessed on the television what's going on in Ukraine. I want to say first and foremost that I'm born and raised in DuPage County, in Wooddale, and my parents came over after World War II and were welcomed into DuPage County, and we grew up here. It's the fabric of what we are. Me and my sister are very involved in the Ukrainian community. You may know my sister, Natalie Duresko, became the Finance Minister of Ukraine in 2014 with the overthrow of President Yanukovych. We are humbled by the outpouring of support that we've gotten from all peoples, from the people of the United States and what we're seeing worldwide, but I will say this, that we're at a critical junction right now. We need help. And right now, we've got enough blankets and Pampers. Poland cannot accept any more humanitarian aid, really. It's backed up, as we saw in California, when there's a backup of shipping containers. They're just not going to go anywhere right now. So what we really need, the only thing the Ukrainian people are asking for at this point is for help with defensive weaponry. And to please use your influence with our state and our federal leadership that we get this defensive weaponry. We need anti-aircraft munitions. We need Patriot missiles, Stingers, Javelins. That's how we've been fighting this war, and you've seen, I think, the resolve of the Ukrainian people from those that are not trained, not a trained army, taking on the largest army in the world. So I would just ask again for your prayers, for your support, and I love to see that you're all wearing blue and yellow and blue and yellow ties. It really warms our heart, and I'm going to take this back to the community, the greater Chicago community. I was involved last night at a coordinating committee at the consulate of Ukraine, which is here in Chicago. Chicago has come through, and Illinois has come through very big for the Ukrainians, and I would just ask again that if you have any influence, please support giving defensive weaponry to Ukraine and pray for the Ukrainian people that this come to some sort of resolution, because there are war crimes that are happening, and we can't just stand by and sit idle. So I appreciate everything, and I'd like to present a flag as well to the county to use as appropriate, the Ukrainian flag of blue and yellow, which always has signified the beautiful blue skies and the wheat-filled land of Ukraine, the breadbasket of Europe. So thank you once again for your proclamation.
This is awesome. Thank you so much. So I'm going to ask if everybody from the board would join us up here. I'd like to take a group picture, all in support. The entire board is with you and the Ukrainian people, and so we want to demonstrate that with a picture of all of us.
Thank you all so much.
I'm never telling anyone.
Hey, everybody ready?
How do you like that?
Smile, everybody.
Don't talk, just smile.
All right, one, two, three.
Thank you all so much. Thank you, Father.
Yes, it's the only thing right now. We're sending it directly to the National Bank of Ukraine.
Next item of our attention here today on the Order of Chairman's Remarks or Chairman's Report is, this is Women's History Month. We have a proclamation. So Liz Chaplin, would you be kind enough to join me up here at the podium, as well as Michelle Podkova? Michelle, I saw you earlier over there. She's our manager at the DuPage Historical Museum. And yeah, anyone else who wants to join us up here?
I would like all the women elected officials to come up here, please.
Okay.
Women's History Month, we're all elected, we're all... And our awesome staff, our department heads, Margaret and any of our department heads, you know, all the care center leaders are all welcome, everybody. Awesome women.
Okay, so as we kind of get organized up here, we have a... Okay, so today we recognize Women's History Month, and we welcome our guests, including Michelle Podkova and Zach Bishop from the DuPage Historical Museum. In celebration of this month, the museum has put together a program called Recognizing Trailblazers: Confident and Courageous Women Who Shaped DuPage. And I think I've seen a part of that in the past, Michelle, when we were over there. Last time, there was some remarkable...
That was Nancy Power.
Yes, okay. And there are some, I guess the point is that there are some remarkable women that are prominent in the history of DuPage County and leading here, and so who are in the exhibit year-round all the time, but this is a special exhibit that even goes further. So these strong women, who are also veterans, are essential to their communities, serving with honor, humility, and reverence for the greater good. I'll read our proclamation, and then I'll ask our guests from the Historic Museum to tell us how the public can learn more and access the video of this program. So the proclamation goes as follows. Whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historical contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas, women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside the home. And whereas, throughout U.S. history, women have played a unique role by providing most of the volunteer labor force of the nation. And whereas, women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation. Whereas, women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas, women have served our country courageously in the military. And whereas, women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, in the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas, it is essential, it is essential that the role of women in history be highlighted and valued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Cronin, Chairman of the Board, members of the Board, do hereby resolve that March is designated as National Women's History Month in DuPage County, and citizens are encouraged to observe March as National Women's History Month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, activities, especially at the DuPage Historical Museum. I'll entertain a motion. Seconded, all those in favor say aye. Posnay, the ayes have it enacted this 8th day of March 2022. Michelle, would you be kind enough to accept this on behalf of all of us? Thank you so much. Please, you want to say a few words?
Thank you for including the museum in the celebration of Women's History Month. Last weekend, on Sunday, the museum celebrated Black History Month and Women's History Month together simultaneously with an event called Recognizing Trailblazers: Confident and Courageous Women Who Shaped DuPage. We partnered with the Confident and Courageous Program at the Edward Hines Jr. VA Hospital to honor four women veterans of color who served in four different U.S. military branches. And we honored them for their dedication to their country, their communities, and their county. The event also featured several organizations, including Naperville Women's Club, who's celebrating 125 years this year, this month, the DAR Fort Payne Chapter, a local Girl Scout troop, and there's also Boy Scout who helped us. We also had local author and historian, Lynette Tilly Turner, attend as well. A video of this program will be uploaded to our website as soon as we can get it edited. It will be at dupegemuseum.org, and will be posted to our social media websites as well. We wanted to thank the DuPage County Board for their continued support of the museum and the history of this county. We believe in celebrating the history of all of DuPage County and look forward to continuing our mission of stewardship, education, and community engagement. Thank you.
Yes. Yes, we have another proclamation. It's the same exact one, and so I wanted to make sure we presented to the League of Women Voters, because what would it be? We couldn't celebrate Women's History Month without recognizing the League of Women Voters. So thank you so much for your participation. Thank you.
The League of Women Voters have been serving the voters of the United States for more than 100 years, and the particular chapter that I belong to, Downers Grove, Woodridge, and Lyle, celebrated our chapter 100th anniversary last summer, and I saw many of you here then. So I thank you for this great honor, and I'm going to give you two quotes, okay? It's International Women's Day, so women all over the world have been working towards peace and justice and many good things, but I'm going to give you two American women, and also one of our mottos is defenders of democracy. Okay, so one of them, in 1848, at Seneca Falls, New York, the very first North American Women's Rights Convention was held, and it was convened by Elizabeth Cady Stanton, who was a co-founder of the National American Women's Suffrage Association. She paraphrased the Declaration of Independence by saying, "We hold these truths to be self-evident that all men and women are created equal." And I don't have an attribution for the second quote, even though it's a favorite of mine. Well-behaved women seldom make history. So let's go on and make history.
Yeah. So thank you all so much. I love doing this recognition every year, and it's really great to see all these... Cheryl, you should be up here in these pictures. We have such great women at the county. We have all these amazing elected official women. Joan, you too, up here. We have all these great women. We have great staff. I know some are on, Sarah Hunt is zooming in, and we have Margaret. We have so many great staff, our great women from the Convent Center, and all these amazing elected officials, so we're a really lucky county, and that's all I'd like to say. So thank you all so much.
One more.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Can we have another presentation we'd like to make, please? And I want to invite Janelle Chadwick to come up here, and there she is. She is a perfect example of, she just knows exactly, she's there already, so yeah. And the staff as well, along with Julie Renahan and Greg Schwarz. Please come on up here and join me. One of the key tenants, come on up, please. Join us. You get two pictures today. That's nice. One of the key tenants of our success here in DuPage is our dedication to continuous improvement, and that's been kind of a principle that we have tried to abide by since day one, and I think has been going on here even before I arrived. But continuous improvement, I think, is a big part of who we are, and even during the pandemic, and maybe especially during the pandemic, our staff really proved their weight in gold. And as they adapted, adjusted, and served our residents seamlessly, we are so, so proud to see this monumental effort rewarded at our DuPage Care Center. We recently learned that the center received a Blue Ribbon Award from the National Agency Driving Healthcare Quality Improvement on behalf of Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services. And this is kind of a big deal. To qualify for the award, the care center underwent a COVID-19 preparedness assessment and achieved a staff COVID-19 vaccination rate of 85% or greater and a resident vaccination rate of 95% or greater. Now, I know all of you joined me in congratulating Janelle, and we all know how difficult this chapter of the pandemic has been in our history, and we can't say it enough to express the appreciation and how impressed we were with all of the hard work, the stress and strains of carrying out your duties and responsibilities at the care center for fragile, fragile members of our community, our fragile friends and neighbors, and aunts and uncles, and grandmas and grandpas, and children, and it's just been remarkable what you've been through and the success that you've realized, and I'm sure it's taken its toll, but this is one of the fruits of the labor. This is the recognition that what you did was remarkable. So I just want to join with the folks that came up with this Blue Ribbon Award, and particularly during this very difficult time over the past years. Janelle, allow me to present this award to you on behalf of the whole DuPage Care Center. Would you be kind to accept on behalf of your team? And this really and truly is a culmination of, you know, our gratitude, and we can never stop thanking you for the good work that you've done, but this has been a particularly difficult chapter in all of our lives, and thank you for the good work that you've done. God bless you.
I often say that I'm just the conductor, but the talent is the band. So one of the things we learned very early on in our COVID journey was planning, and they call me, I'll tell you this, my family calls me Nervous Nellie. I plan for the worst and hope for the best, and that early planning was what really positioned us well for the entire past two years. Our county resources and getting us PPE from all different sources, Animal Services, FM, we had welder helmets for visors. We couldn't do that without the collaboration of the county departments and the county board. The team here has been phenomenal. We all learned there are silver linings with COVID, communication at all levels, and having the staff and even the residents be a part of those conversations, challenging conversations, scary conversations, but by being a part, that reduced the fear. So I can't say enough about that, learning that lesson, communication, agility, continuous improvement. We moved walls at all hours of the day to move the COVID unit, and FM would say, "We just moved it this morning," and we're like, "Yeah." So thank you to them for their patience, but I can't say enough about the team. It's definitely the staff and the residents that really deserve recognition for this. And I know Annabelle, my Director of Nursing, is here, as well as Shawna Berman, Assistant Administrator, and Anita Rajakapal, Assistant Administrator, and I think Annabelle's going to say a few words.
I'm not prepared.
Yes, you are.
It was May 11, 2020, at 10 o'clock at night, when I received a call from the care center. We had our first resident COVID case. As I was driving to the care center from Room Uville that night, I kept telling myself, "We are prepared. We've been doing a lot of trainings, a lot of reenactments, how to move a positive resident from one floor to the COVID unit. The staff are prepared." And I said, "I am prepared." What I was not prepared is seeing the fear in the frontliner's eyes. As I was helping the other nurses doing contact tracing that night, I saw Janelle helping another CNA with their PPE. It feels like we are preparing them for a battle, and it was. It was a battle. Now, we are really close in winning that battle. This simple piece of paper means a whole lot for the care center, especially for the frontliner who's working directly with the residents. The COVID nurses and CNAs who until now have some scars in their faces from the P100, the PPE that they are wearing eight to 16 hours a day. A lot of work went together at work, a ton of work. The pandemic had shaken the care center a little bit, but the staff remained steadfast, and we all faced this pandemic head-on. We wouldn't have done it without the support of everybody in this room. The supply of PPE, we armed our frontliners, made them very confident in going inside the COVID unit. The Health Department, Emily, Karen, Dr. Chag, Elizabeth, who's always there each time we need help in interpreting the guidance. Adam Forker and Adrienne Gargani, who helped us with our vaccination. In fact, the Health Department is now starting to come to the care center to give some of our residents their boosters. We are very, very grateful. Well, Janelle told me just to give a couple of sentences, and I think it's more than that. So if I forget anybody, please know that the care center is very grateful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So I think this is an improvement just in terms of people's ability to access. So there's no action that you really need to take right now. The public and the staff will still be able to navigate to our website through dupageco.org or through dupagecounty.gov. People can do that safely, securely. Both addresses work. And most importantly, our website, no matter how you get to it, is covered by the highest level of cybersecurity protection that there is available in the industry for us. So when we redesign and launch our new website—which is another important project being spearheaded by IT, and I want to thank Anthony. He's been just awesome. He's been a whirlwind since he's gotten here—then together, we will promote the dupagecounty.gov link as part of our new website rollout and our new look. And so that's kind of fun and exciting. At that time, when this—you know, we roll it out, we will update our stationery, our bookmarks, printed materials, email signatures, and branding to match the dupagecounty.gov address. But for now, you may see a flash as the site takes you to the county.gov address, but the safety, content, and accessibility of our website remains the same. You may also see dupagecounty.gov on some election materials, as the migration is mandatory under new election laws. Since the Clerk's Election Division is part of our website, this change is necessary. So just be advised that that's okay. So what's your takeaway here today? I would say be aware that dupagecounty.gov is coming, but there's no action needed right now. Anthony presented on this topic in Technology Committee today, and you can reference that meeting. I think there's a nice video that you can access, of course. Or, of course, Anthony is always available. Finally, I want to underscore my support for an important item on the agenda today, if you don't mind. And I've kind of gotten immersed in this issue recently. I think all of you have to some extent. I hope you will support the resolution proposing that we join with municipalities opposing the merger of the Canadian Pacific Railway and the Kansas City Southern Company. This plan would have a huge, huge impact on the northeast region of our county. I mean, really significant, measurable. It would impact at least 150,000 DuPage County residents by more than tripling the number of freight trains coming through communities on the north side and northeast parts of the county. I'm worried about safety. I'm worried about extremely long traffic delays. I mean, we're talking hours and hours—I mean, throughout the day, that traffic will be held up. Noise and emissions. Transportation Chairman Don Pacowski and the members of District 1 and District 6—1 and 6 have discussed this issue at length. They're fully briefed about it. I've had the opportunity to sit down with some of the mayors and talk at length. I had a lengthy meeting out at the Village of Bensonville, talked to those folks, really walked through it, and really they illustrated some really, really dramatic, tangible, you know, what it means to the community, the impact on property values, the impact on business generation. Who wants to locate their business if you can't get to it, and you can't access goods and materials? It's really, really a dramatic plan that they have in mind, or the impact would be dramatic. So there are impacts on residential, commercial, Bartlett, Bensonville, Hanover Park, Itasca, Rozelle, and Wooddale, communities in District 1 and 6. And we will stand together with our municipal partners and oppose this merger. We think we have a pretty good strategy. I've collaborated with Chris Snyder and our Transportation Department and our leadership, and I'm hopeful and confident that we will be able to have an impact on this proceeding at the federal level. So that concludes my remarks and my report on Chairman's Report. We move to the next order of business entitled Public Comment. Public Comment, we do have—thank you, sir. We do have Steve Fixler here, our Veterans Assistance Commission Director is here. Oh, there he is. Snuck up on me there. So yeah, please proceed, sir.
Hello, everybody. I'm actually talking on behalf of American Legion Post 76, the Carroll Stream Wheaton Post. And the American Legion Auxiliary Unit is hosting a Veterans Suicide Prevention Presentation on April 21st from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. 6:30 to 7:00 is actually some light refreshments that they're going to put together, and then 7:00 to 8:00 is the presentation. I will be presenting on behalf of the DuPage County Veterans Suicide Prevention Coalition, as I'm a co-chair, and Kristi Bassett from VA—from Heinz Hospital. She works in the Suicide Prevention Section, and she will be conducting SAVE training that night, too. This was brought about because one of our bingo players' son, veteran's son, committed suicide in Kendall County about two, three months ago. And then we just found out a couple—about a month ago—that a veteran had committed suicide in DuPage County. And I don't know any of the details about that. So the Auxiliary came up with the idea, "How about we host one prevention, training, and awareness and everything like that?" So we're concentrating on the communities of Wheaton and Carroll Stream, but anybody's invited. Anybody in the county, even outside the county. We never turn anybody down. And yesterday, I spoke in front of the Wheaton City Council and the Carroll Stream City Council to just give them the information like that. And that's really about it. I do have some flyers here. I contacted Deborah DC to put it on the website, because either I can't remember, or I'm not allowed to. I don't remember. But I can either email it to you guys if you like, or you can download a flyer, or you can stop by the office. I'll give you a hard copy, too, and everything like that. Unless anybody has any questions—I know this is public comment—but otherwise, see me downstairs or something. Okay?
Thank you very much, Mr. Fixler. Thank you for your good work. We do have additional remarks offered through public comment. This is through our electronic remote remarks that have been submitted. Please, for the record, these remarks still must comply and comport with our rules, and that is, no remark shall exceed three minutes in length, nor shall the total time of all remarks, whether in person or submitted electronically, shall exceed 30 minutes. With that, Evan, please take it away.
Good morning, Board members. Just one comment today. This comment is from Zar Alvarado. Subject is " Trademark infringement and unlawful public use of private property." Comment reads in all caps, "Your county and your state governor were served in August 2021 of the new owners of the trademark names for banking purposes, quote, 'COVID,' end quote, quote, 'COVID-19,' end quote, quote, 'vaccine,' end quote, quote, 'vaccination,' end quote, quote, 'vaccine passport,' end quote, and other trade names. Your county, DuPage County, already has a U.S. $30 million lien and levy for operating unlawful holdings, facilities, and human trafficking of non-U.S. citizens. The lien holders of the trademark have informed me that due to your county's acts of war and retaliation on the Leydwick family, parenthetical, 'one of our beneficiaries,' and parenthetical, we are to file notice of intent to foreclose on your county and its public buildings. This is your safe harbor notice of intent to foreclose and to file a federal civil action with warrants for civilian citizens' arrests for deposit within truth and lending 10 business days. Ms. Alvarado, Executive Secretary."
Okay. That concludes our public comment. We move on to the next order of business entitled Consent. Consent. I will seek a motion to approve the consent agenda items. However, we are advised that we need to proceed a little differently. I'm going to read off each item, and is that correct? A, B, and then we'll take a vote after each letter?
No, not after each letter, all at once.
Oh, we can do it all at once. Okay, all right. Okay, it's very important that I read this off. So DuPage—so 7A, DuPage County Board Regular Meeting, Tuesday, February 22, 2022. B, Payment of Claims, 218, 2022 Pay List. C, Payment of Claims, 225, 2022 Pay List. D, Payment of Claims, 228, 2022 Auto Debit Pay List. E, Payment of Claims, 31, 2022 Pay List. F, Consent Item, Treasurer's Report of Investments and Demand Deposits, January 2022. That concludes all the items under the title of Consent. I'll entertain a motion and seconded. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
And Schworzy.
Aye.
Thank you, Member Salmon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on CBR 121-22, Resolution, Appointment of EF Todd Benson to the DuPage County Ethics Commission.
But a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
And Schworzy.
Aye.
Thank you, Member Salmon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on CBR 121-22, Resolution, Appointment of Jenna Fahey-Heller as Weed Control Superintendent.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Salmon. On to the Order of Finance, Member Liz Chaplin.
Good morning, Chairman. Thank you. I move approval of FIR 011722, Resolution, Acceptance and Appropriation of the State Care's Pandemic-Related Stability Payment Program, the amount of $231,572, DuPage Care Center.
Motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Thank you, Member Salmon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on CBR 121-22, Resolution, Appointment of Jenna Fahey-Heller as Weed Control Superintendent.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 010822, Resolution, Additional Appropriation for the Adult Redeploy Illinois Program Grant, the amount of 300—we're increasing it from 300—what are we doing—intergovernmental agreement from 349,131 to 360,481, an increase of $11,350, probation and court services.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 012422, Authorization to Transfer and Appropriate 9.5 Million in Additional Funds from the General Fund to the County Infrastructure Fund.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 012322, Resolution, Additional Appropriation for the Facilities Management County Infrastructure Fund, the amount of 9.5 million.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 017022, Resolution, Additional Appropriation for the Sheriff Sex Offender Fund, the amount of $2,166.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 011222, Resolution, Additional Appropriation for the State Drug Traffic Prevention Fund, the amount of $678.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 012522, Resolution, Budget Transfers, March 8, 2022, from various companies and accounting units.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIP 008922, Recommendation for the Approval of the Contract to Government Business Systems, Inc., for Election Supply Kits and Supplies for the County Clerk, Election Division, a contract not to exceed $158,970.50.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIS 001822, Ordinance Amendment to the County Recorder Fees for Imposition of New Fee for Filing Restrictive Covenant Modification and Increase to Return Check Fee.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Chaplin. Fine report. On to the Order of Environmental, Member Sheila Rutledge.
Thank you, Chairman. I have no items to vote on this morning, but I appreciate the opportunity for a committee update. Last week, I think there were two front-page articles in the Tribune about the effects of climate change and how those things are accelerating at a faster rate. And we are seeing automakers starting to set deadlines for when their fleets turn totally electric, some as close as four years from now. So we have an item on our agenda this morning about the transit van. And I understand in the comments I made at Finance that sometimes it makes sense to purchase a gas vehicle. And in this case, I agree that that was the right thing to do. But I would urge all of our staff and board members to consider a different metric when it comes to the things that would be an adverse effect to our environment, and that we need a new metric for how to make those decisions. So I appreciate taking a look at all of that. And I did have—last week, one of our board members came out of the transportation meeting and said, "We won't be buying any more electric cars"—oops, excuse me—because it costs too much to fix them. And I'll suggest that that cost, while it needs to be considered, is a lesser consideration than what our decisions do for our environment, and that we need to be leaders in that realm. So that's my comment for today. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. That moves—that allows us to move on to the next order of business. Health and Human Services, Member Julie Renahan.
Thank you, Chairman. So congratulations again to our care center on their award. I mean, I think we can all feel very proud about what the care center's done to keep our residents safe. And I think we can all send them our very best wishes for reopening and health for people going forward. We were advised at the HHS Committee, the plans are underway to resume shared dining and group activities, and I think we're all happy to hear that going forward. So with that, I will move approval of HHSR 116-22, Resolution and Approval for a Partial Release deed, Partial Release of Regulatory and Land Use Restriction Agreement for Temporary Construction Ease between DuPage County and Prairie Green Habitat LLC, Project HM11-01, Prairie Green Subdivision, Improving Intersection of Illinois 56 and Illinois 53, DuPage County, and Authorizing Director of Community Services to Execute Said Documents.
But a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
I move approval of FISO 001822, ordinance amendment to the county recorder fees for imposition of new fee for filing restrictive covenant modification and increase to return check fee.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Chaplin. Fine report. On to the order of environmental, Member Sheila Rutledge, for a committee.
Thank you, Chairman. I have no items to vote on this morning, but I appreciate the opportunity for a committee update.
Thanks.
Last week, I think there were two front-page articles in the Tribune about the effects of climate change and how those things are accelerating at a faster rate. And we are seeing automakers starting to set deadlines for when their fleets turn totally electric, some as close as four years from now. So, we have an item on our agenda this morning about the transit van. And I understand in the comments I made at finance that sometimes it makes sense to purchase a gas vehicle. And in this case, I agree that that was the right thing to do. But I would urge all of our staff and board members to consider a different metric when it comes to the things that would be an adverse effect to our environment, and that we need a new metric for how to make those decisions. So, I appreciate taking a look at all of that. And I did have, last week, one of our board members came out of the transportation meeting and said, "We won't be buying any more electric cars," whoops, excuse me, "because it costs too much to fix them." And I'll suggest that that cost, while it needs to be considered, is a lesser consideration than what our decisions do for our environment, and that we need to be leaders in that realm. So, that's my comment for today. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. That moves, that allows us to move on to the next order of business. Health and Human Services, Member Julie Renahan.
Thank you, Chairman. So, congratulations again to our care center on their award. I mean, I think we can all feel very proud about what the care center's done to keep our residents safe. And I think we can all send them our very best wishes for reopening and health for people going forward. We were advised at the HHS Committee, the plans are underway to resume shared dining and group activities, and I think we're all happy to hear that going forward. So, with that, I will move approval of HHSR 116-22, resolution, approval for a partial release deed, partial release of regulatory and land use restriction agreement for temporary construction easement between DuPage County and Prairie Green Habitat LLC, project HM11-01, Prairie Green Subdivision, improving intersection of Illinois 56 and Illinois 53, DuPage County, and authorizing Director of Community Services to execute said documents.
But a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. Schwartzy. Salmon. Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez. Covert. Desart. DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia, Hart, Krajewski, LaPlante, Ozog, and Pachowski.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Renahan.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of change order HHSP 250A-20. It's an amendment to resolution HHSP 250-20, issued to pay suburban bus service to provide transportation services for DuPage veterans, October 1, 2020 through November 30, 2021, $8,324.80.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan.
Thank you. I move approval of authorization of overnight travel for the weatherization assessor to attend HVAC and diagnostic pressure course in Champaign, April 5 through the 8, 2022, $997.60.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Renahan. On to judicial public safety, Member Renahan.
Alright, thank you, Chairman. I move approval JPSP 80-22, recommendation for approval of contract issued to Conference Technologies for the purchase, installation, and programming of monitors, receivers, and other equipment for the courtrooms, March 9, 2022 through June 30, 2022, not to exceed $140,466.84.
But a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartzy. Salmon. Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez. Covert. Desart. DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia, Hart, Krajewski. LaPlante. Ozog. And Pachowski.
Thank you, Member Renahan.
I move approval of JPSP 7922, approval of a contract purchase order to clear loss prevention for security system replacement and repair services as needed. March 8, 2022 through March 7, 2025. This is for the Office of Homeland Security Emergency Management, not to exceed $305,938.59.
Leave is granted, Member Renahan.
Thank you. I move approval of JPSP 78-22, approval of contract purchase order to insight public sector for microphones for the county court system, $41,820.
Leave is granted, Member Renahan. That concludes. Very efficient, succinct report. We move on to the next order of business, Legislative, Member Dawn Desart.
Thank you, Chairman. During the past month or six weeks, one of our state representatives here in DuPage County received death threats. Today, during the legislative committee meeting, right after this meeting, we will hear about enhanced penalties for those who threaten public officials or public employees here in Illinois from the criminal justice arm of our state's attorney's office. So, that's something to look forward to during our legislative committee meeting today. Today, we'll be voting on DuPage County's 2022 federal legislative agenda, and this is a living, breathing document. Maybe this is not concrete. We can always add to it or take from it as legislation moves forward through the federal halls of justice. So, I move that we approve LEGR 0102-22, resolution adopting the county's 2022 federal legislative program.
But a motion and a second, there appears to be interest in some discussion. Mr. Eckoff.
Well, I just wanted to go on the record, I'm gonna be supporting this. I think most of everything is very good ideas, but I did wanna go on record as saying I'm against the repeal of the SALT deduction camp.
Of the what?
The SALT deduction camp.
Okay. Alright, any other discussion? Anyone else seeking recognition? There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia, Hart. Krajewski. LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge. Schwartzy. Salmon. Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin. Chavez. And Covert.
Abstain.
Okay. Did you get the last one abstained? Okay, yeah, okay, thanks. That concludes the business of the legislative committee. We move on to the next order of business, public transit, Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of PTR 011922, a resolution, recommendation for approval of an agreement with View Transit LLC to install and maintain public transit shelters in DuPage County. The county will share a proportion of the annual advertising revenue.
But a motion, is there a motion? Motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ozog.
Yes.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartzy. Salmon. Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez. Covert. Desart. DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia, Hart. Krajewski. And LaPlante.
Okay, Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, Public Works update. Today, we will be approving the contract to expand the judicial, to expand the courthouse. And I'm also, again, for the last time, going to thank all of our staff, procurement, Public Works, Finance, the Judicial Department, for all their hard work. They've done this in a very rapid fashion and done it very thoroughly. I also want to thank Chief Judge Popejoy for bringing all of us from the board in to discuss the needs of the judiciary in getting this addition done. I do want to add, though, and I brought this up in finance, I am concerned, it was brought to my attention that Member Hart had received a $3,000 donation right after the purchase order was initiated for this contract of $19 million, for $3,000 from an architect who works for White. And while that does not fit the ethics definition of what must be declared, I think that going forward, especially in an election year, it would behoove all of us to either abstain or consider strongly when we are voting on contracts of this magnitude in particular. I believe in good government, and that's what I would be doing myself. Thank you. Moving forward, I would like to, I move to approve FMR 011022, resolution, authorization to submit a grant application to the Community Development Block Grant COVID-19 Response, CBDG CV funding for the DuPage Care Center for Air Handling Unit Replacement Project in the amount of $1.5 million.
But a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ozog.
Yes.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge. Schwartzy. Salmon. Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin. Chavez. Covert. Desart. DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia, Hart. Krajewski. And LaPlante.
Okey-dokey. Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of FMP 008522, recommendation for the approval of a contract to Home Medical, limited to furnish and deliver an additional 20 air indoor air quality disinfection units to be used across campus for facilities management for the period March 9, 2022, through November 30, 2022, for a total contract amount not to exceed $63,130 per pricing being held from a previous quote, and this is an ARPA item.
But a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ozog.
Yes.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartzy. Salmon. Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin. Chavez. Covert. Desart. DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia, Hart. Krajewski. And LaPlante.
Thank you, Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of FMP 008722, recommendation for the approval of an agreement between the County of DuPage and Greeley Enhanced LLC to provide professional engineering design services for the replacement and upgrade of the existing control systems for the power plant for facilities management, total contract amount not to exceed $71,146, ARPA item.
Well, we have to take in a roll call. So, there's been a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk, please call, wasn't there abstain or something? Alright, leave is granted. Member Ozog.
Okay, thank you. I now move for approval of FMP 008122, recommendation for the approval of a contract to White Construction Services to provide architectural and engineering design services and professional construction manager services under a construction manager at risk, guaranteed maximum price method of delivery for the judicial annex improvements, bond courtroom expansion at the jail, and for two new courtrooms at the judicial office facility for facilities management for the period March 8, 2022 through November 30, 2026, for a total contract amount not to exceed $19,800,000, professional services vetted through a qualification-based selection process in compliance with the Illinois Local Government Professional Services Selection Act. This is a partial ARPA item.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second, a request for leave, but there's also a few folks seeking recognition, I believe, was Lynn? No? Member, Member, Member Hart, followed by Member Desart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, this board's been through enough politics in the last month. I'm not going to dignify what the chair of this committee said with a response, because I believe that we have been through too much politics. But what I will ask is for Nick or someone from Public Works to talk through the procurement process for this item and let us know who is involved in that, just so that the air can be cleared.
Just so I'm sure, the procurement process for this 19.8, or in general?
Yeah, how the vendor was selected and who was involved.
And we can, we'll go through that, but I will tell you that procurement process is the same pretty much for all the contracts. So, the, we're gonna talk about the selection process for the CM at-risk contract that is under consideration, 19.8 million. So, kind of a little bit of a history. Statement of interest was issued by the county on November 4, 2021. Six firms submitted their statement of interest for the project prior to the November 23, 2021 deadline. A selection committee was formed for this project that constituted seven different people. Two were from facilities management, two from the 18th Circuit Court, actually, one of them was a chief judge as well. Two of them from the state's attorney's office and one from the public defender, because that was, those were the impacted different agencies. The team of those seven reviewed and ranked the submittals and shortlisted three different firms, with White being one of them. Those three firms then came in and gave a presentation, an interview, to the selection committee. And I will say, the selection committee overwhelmingly and unanimously selected White as their preferred and most qualified vendor around January 7. And I will tell you that with this one, as with all other contracts, we do not include you guys as a board for the selection, because we keep you out of the selection process, and this was no different from that.
Wonderful. Anyone else seeking recognition, Member Desart?
Chairman, I was just gonna ask for a roll call vote, please.
Pardon me?
I request a roll call vote, please.
Roll call, roll call, that's it, okay, yes. There's been a motion and a second. Anyone else seeking recognition for purposes of discussion, seen none? Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Ozog.
Yes.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartzy. Salmon. Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez. Covert. Desart. DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia, Hart. Krajewski. And LaPlante.
Thank you. Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of PWP 008322, recommendation for the approval of a contract to Curry Motors Fleet for the purchase of one 2023 transit van for Public Works for a total contract amount not to exceed $32,696, pricing in compliance with Government Joint Purchasing Act, suburban purchasing cooperative.
But a motion and a second, there was a request for leave, I believe, leave is granted. Member Ozog.
Okay, thank you. I now move for approval of PWP 008422, recommendation for the approval of a contract to LAI Limited for the purchase of Worthington and Ingersoll Rand Centrifugal Pump Replacement Parts for the Woodridge, Knollwood Nordic Wastewater Treatment Facilities for a four-year period, March 8, 2022 through March 7, 2026, for a contract amount not to exceed $70,000. Competitive bids not suitable for competitive bids, sole source.
There's been a motion and a second, request for leave, leave is granted, Member Ozog.
Thank you. I move for approval of PWP 008622, recommendation for the approval of a contract to Univar USA Incorporated to provide sodium bisulfate at the Woodridge and Knollwood Facilities for Public Works for the period April 1, 2022 through March 31, 2023, for a contract total amount not to exceed $40,000, per low bid, bid award 20105PW.
Leave is granted, Member Ozog.
Thank you. I move for approval of PWCO 000822, recommendation for the approval of amendment to resolution PWP 012221, issued to Waste Management due to needed additional funds for disposal of refuse and grit waste at the Vector Station due to an increase in usage for Public Works to increase the contract in the amount of $15,000, taking the original contract amount of $47,000, resulting in amended contract amount not to exceed $62,000, an increase of 31.91%.
Leave is granted. Member Ozog, I think they conclude your report. Yes, thank you so much. On to the next order of business entitled Stormwater, Member Jim Zay.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Move on SMR 11422, recommendation of intergovernmental agreement between the County of DuPage and the Forest Reserve District of DuPage County, intergovernmental cooperization and utilization for available resources.
But a motion and a second, Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin. Chavez. Covert. Desart. DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia, Hart. Krajewski. LaPlante. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge. Schwartzy. Salmon. And Tornatori.
Members A.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on SMR 11522, intergovernmental agreement between the County of DuPage and Winfield Township Road District for Cornell Road Covert Maintenance Project, not to exceed $20,000.
Leave is granted, Members A.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on SMR 11322, approval of the Ward's Creek Watershed Plan.
Leave is granted, Members A.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on SMP 88, contract issued to AMS Mechanical Services for construction of East Loeb Pipe Replacement, amount of $1,109,792.24.
Leave is granted, Members A.
That's my, end of my report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
A fine report. Onto the order of, let's see here, technology. Ashley Salmon, Member Salmon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just by way of committee update, I want to echo your remarks and the remarks that Anthony made this morning in technology, not just the updates to our URL-to-be.gov, which I think is appropriate for a county of a million folks that we're living with. But I also think it's really important that we are adding the closed captioning aspect to our Zoom. I want to thank Members Covert and Rutledge, who've worked on accessibility issues throughout our time on this board as well. With that, I would move on TEP 76-22, a recommendation for the approval of a contract to Carstop Technologies. This is for hosting our legislative management software streaming services, contracts from April 1, 2022 through November 30, 2024, for a total of $118,480.81 bought via the Governmental Joint Purchasing Act.
But a motion and a second, Member, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin. Chavez. Covert. Desart. DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia, Hart. Krajewski. LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
And Schwartzy.
Member Salmon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on TEP 90-22, a recommendation for the approval of a contract to SHI International. This is for our firewall system. This contract covers March 25, 2022 through March 25, 2023, for a total of $37,608 bought via the Joint Governmental Purchasing Act.
Leave is granted, Member Salmon.
Thank you. And lastly, I move on TEP 91-22, a recommendation for the approval of a contract to SHI International for our Zendesk Customer Service Solution. This contract is from April 1, 2022 through March 31, 2023, for a total of $49,106.82.
Leave is granted, Member Salmon.
Thank you. That completes my report. On to the order of transportation. Member Don Pachowski.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Before I start, I would like to thank you for your leadership and support in the Coalition Opposed to the Railroad merger, and I want to thank staff. The press release has already been prepared and ready to go out, so kudos to a good job by staff. With that, I would move to approve D T R zero one two zero twenty-two, a resolution to join the Coalition opposed to the proposed merger of the Canadian Pacific Railway and the Kansas City Southern Railway not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars.
And a motion and a second, Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll. Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
And Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Pachowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve D T R zero one oh nine dash twenty-two, a local agency agreement between the County of DuPage and the Illinois Department of Transportation for improvements at Warrenville Road over the east branch of the DuPage River County to be reimbursed up to three hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Leave is granted. Member Pachowski.
Move to approve D T P zero zero seven seven two two, recommendation for approval of contract to Petroleum Traders Corporation to furnish and deliver gasoline and diesel fuel as needed for the Division of Transportation of Public Works for a contract not to exceed one million, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Leave is granted. Member Pachowski.
And finally, Mr. Chairman, move to approve change order D T P oh one two one B dash twenty, amendment to a resolution issued tonight, E A Inc. for professional design engineering services for improvements to the bridge carrying Warrenville Road over the east branch of the DuPage River.
Second most favorable roll.
To re-execute the agreement, the latest I dot forms and more current execution date.
There's been a request for leave. Leave is granted. Thank you very much, Mr. Pachowski. A fine report. That concludes our committee reports. We move on to the next order of business entitled Discussion. All familiar with this? Discussion, Public Act ninety-nine zero six four six, Pension Obligation Projections Required by the Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act. Anyone seeking recognition on this order of business? Seeing none, hearing none. We move on to the next order of business entitled Old Business. Mr. Shorzy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to give a shout out to the staff of the DuPage Care Center for their Blue Ribbon Award on vigilance today. Back in, back in March of two thousand and twenty, as a first responder, it was very fearful, not knowing what was, you know, not knowing what this new disease really was, and I remember going into some, some senior homes, because these were the places that people were really dying. The senior homes were, people were dying, and, and it was, and I was fearful. And for the staff that stayed, I mean, many of these senior homes lost a lot of staff. A lot of these care centers lost a lot of staff because of that fear. And for the, for the staff at the DuPage Care Center that stayed and fought through this and worked through this to take care of our most vulnerable, this award was great, but, but every single one of those staff deserves a huge thank you. So, thank you.
Very nice. Thank you. Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to make a comment about the resolution that we've just passed for the hundred thousand dollars for Coalition opposed to the merger of the Canadian Pacific and the Kansas City. In nineteen ninety-six, I've lived in my home since nineteen eighty-six, but in nineteen ninety-six, the Chicago Northwestern was purchased by the Union Pacific. And when they're estimating three trains a day to tenfold, I'm afraid it could be far greater than that. So I don't have a whole lot of hope that the Coalition is going to be able to prevent the merger, but I think that speaking in a unified voice might be able to get concessions about operations. And these operations, obviously, they impact public safety, movement through these towns, and also Metra. So I think that it's a really, it's going to be money well spent to at least try to maintain a voice in what's going on with this situation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Members Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We heard in the legislative update today that the committee's going to be taking up stiffer penalties for elected officials. But I want to point this out for the record. As of January first, two thousand and twenty-three, threatening a public official in Illinois becomes a probational offense. Offender cannot be held on bail thanks to the passage of the Safety Act, which I believe many of you supported on this board. And if an individual is charged with threatening a public official and shows up and fails to show up in court, it is only a misdemeanor offense. This impact of your support of the Safety Act has made our county less safe, and frankly, our own personal safety is now in jeopardy. The Safety Act has gotten rid of cash bail, and you can see the results. Violent crime is up in our county, because we can't hold people charged with violent crime or who has, or who has made threats in jail. And that's your doing. You prevented this board from voting on a resolution asking the governor to veto the legislation because you said it didn't impact the county. Well, it did, and it will for generations negatively impact our county. State's Attorney Bullin for years has recommended stiffer penalties for numbers of serious offenses, from carjackings to assaults to retail theft, but the General Assembly has not advanced any of his bills. With today's discussion in legislative, you are saying that threatening a public official should have a higher penalty than carjacking, assault with a deadly weapon, or retail theft. Are elected officials better? And I know the board member that brought this up, I'd like to do a quote back from when we weren't allowed to vote on this, descending this to the governor, to ask him to veto the bill. I think the quote is, "I don't believe our job as county board, as a county board, is debate the merits of this bill." That was done in Springfield. We've been told numerous times not to bring politics to this board floor. This resolution is political in nature. Well, now we're seeing it's not political in nature. Our objection was perfectly about safety for this county, and that bill has definitely affected it. But now, since, I guess, it was stated many times, an elected official and your friend was threatened, that now we need to take a second look at this. Instead of listening to what we had to say and have a debate on, on this floor, now because it personally affects you, now it becomes that. But how has it personally affected all the members of our county over the last several years, and it's going to for generations? So when we have that discussion today, let's have a good discussion about it, and hear from our state's attorney, and see how the Safety Act has weakened our county and has made it less safe, and that's doing on part of many of these board members here on the floor. Thank you.
Member Desart.
Thank you. I don't think that the discussion today, I mean, it could go that way. It could go toward stiffer punishments, but the presentation from our criminal, criminal justice attorneys, criminal justice arm of our state's attorney is just going to tell us what, what the current situation is. I don't, I mean, the conversation could go the way that you think it might, Mr. Zay, but, but my understanding from Cheryl Marquet is just that it's from our state's attorney to tell us what punishment is right now. That's all.
Go ahead. Further discussion, member DeCiani?
Yeah, on a more light note, I wanted to give a shout out with it being International Women's Day to the woman of my life, my wife, who's a caregiver, my mom, my two daughters, who are just tremendous people. But we saw today at the care center, and when you look at the eighty, ninety percent of the caregivers that are out there on the front lines, you know, walking in a COVID ICU, walking in a care center, COVID unit, they're, they're all women. And, and, you know, they're out there taking care of our seniors, our, our folks dealing with COVID, and they did it without any apprehension. You know, think about cops going into a rough situation where you got, you know, potential gunfire. Here, you've got women walking into a room filled with a virus that may, may take their life. And my wife actually saw some of her friends actually pass during this process, which is tough. And I begged her not to go to work and go on leave, and she's like, hey, I took an oath, we got to beat this. And she was right in there in the midst. So hats off to the ladies that stepped up and kept our, our country safe, this county safe, and, and do it with a smile. Thank you.
Amy Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank this board for their straw poll hands up two weeks ago to support the DuPage Convention and Visitors Bureau. We were hoping to come back soon with a formal presentation and resolution. We are putting together a very robust program so that we can model it after what Choose DuPage did, and also what the foundation is currently doing in DuPage County, so that we have really good governance and oversight over these dollars, and that we make sure that we can include all the hoteliers throughout DuPage County. So I wanted to make sure that everyone knew that we are working hard on this. We've already had meetings with finance, and we will be bringing it back as soon as we have a program in place. So thank you.
Choose DuPage did a marvelous job on that responsibility, didn't they? So good.
Thank you.
Further discussion, member Chaplin.
Old business or new business?
Old business.
Oh, well, does it?
We're, yeah, we're on old business right now.
Oh, so, yeah, so I just want to give a shout out to member Ozog, because I read in this morning.
Speaking of old business, what do you mean? She's young and new.
Well, speaking of, I just read in the Daily Herald this morning that she is going to be serving on the Metropolitan Family Service Board, and I think she's going to continue her good, the good work that she does on the county board is going to overflow into that organization. So congratulations, member Ozog.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Member Ozog.
Thank you, member Chaplin. I appreciate it. I wanted to, I'm not able to make it to the legislative meeting this afternoon, but I wanted to express my support for repealing the salt deduction cap. I'm going to guess that virtually nobody in this room pays under ten thousand dollars a year in property taxes, and I think that this would be really helpful to many of our constituents in DuPage County. And I think that we should definitely support this. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion, member Rutledge.
Thank you, Chairman. First of all, thank you, Jeff, for your report about our sales tax revenue and how far we have surpassed our projections for that. But that kind of brings me to my next question, is I think that our sales tax would have been greater had we passed cannabis when we first brought that to the board a couple of years ago. And I know that we have had a presentation in our development committee about that. So my question is, where are we on that?
Yeah, I think, yes, we've discussed this at length recently. But Jeff, if you want to offer a few thoughts, I, I think basically because a lot of the municipalities are in the business, there, there seems to be a finite amount of demand for this, and so we kind of don't really want to. But, you know, I don't know, we, there's a whole method. I know that you're very interested in it, so.
Well, I'm, I'm interested, has member Rutledge, in the finances of it. So right now, we're trying to determine what the revenue from the sales, from the sales of cannabis would be. So we had a figure brought forward, but we're not sure if that's a correct figure. So we want to have our facts accurate before we bring it back to the board, but we are working on that. So hopefully, we'll bring it back sometime. Any projections, Jeff, on when that might, what was that?
April.
April.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
Okey dokey. Any further discussion on the order of old business? Old business. Seeing none, hearing none. We move on to the next order entitled New Business. Member Sadia Covert.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to say happy International Women's Day to all the women around the world, and I will be speaking this afternoon in Chicago in an international women's event by one of the ambassadors. So I'm excited for it, and, and thank you, member DeCiani, for first thing, happy International Women's Day. So, thank you.
Wonderful. Mr. Krajewski.
Yeah, just from, from my district, I just want to recognize Lou Mallers. He was the two thousand twenty-two Citizen of the Year for the city of Darien. Thirty-year member of the Lions Club and about every civic organization that's done anything in any event that's been done in Darien. So he had a nice turnout Friday night. And I want to thank the chairman for presenting or drafting up the resolution, recognizing Lou for all the work that he has done voluntarily during his time in Darien, and I was able to present the resolution that you did, chairman, Friday night. So thank you.
Yeah, that's awesome. We have, we have some real gems throughout the community, and Darien's blessed with this citizen, and there's other community members. I'd love to, I mean, they don't all have that recognition, but I could think of several people that I are deserving of that, that we know. But, member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, we held the fifty-eighth Annual Chamber of Commerce Glen Ellen Village Awards were held, and I'd like to give a particular mention to, Erica Nelson was here earlier today, actually. Erica Nelson was named the hometown hero, and Kim Hesterman-Reed was named the Citizen of the Year, and both of these women have done an awful lot for Glen Ellen, so many different areas. I'm not even going to enumerate them, but the fifty-eighth Annual Dinner was a really wonderful time to, they, public servants, businesses, it really brings the whole community together. So I was very pleased to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Member LaPlante.
Thank you so much, Chairman. I would love to give a shout out to the Glen Ellen, Glenbard West varsity boys basketball team. Yay.
Fabulous. Wow.
I know.
Amazing.
On fire. So they won their super sectional game last night, which means we all head down to Champaign this weekend for the state championship. So, go Hilltoppers. So proud of this team. Love it, and I can't wait to watch them win on Saturday. Thank you.
Yeah, they are a remarkable team. I mean, they're like one of the top teams in the nation.